Welcome to the November 20th, 2019 meeting of the Planning Board. Please join us while we salute our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we're going to begin the meeting with a moment of silence for our chairman and dear friend Jim Erhardt, who passed away on November 4th. Jim did an excellent job serving the people of the town of Smithtown. His expertise and leadership during the last 15 years will be missed. Our condolences to his family. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number 1, 2012-04, Storbit Homes, Wisconsin. Number 2, 2012-02, Carlson Associates in Kings Park. Number 3, 2010-06, KVC Holdings. And under waiver requests, number 4, number 773, Scholar States and Comac.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in any of the matters that were just recommended to be recessed? Okay, I move that we recess items 1 through 4 as read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So recessed.
The first item is an extension of conditional approval for number 1173, Platt and White Platt in Smithtown. The applicant has requested an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number 1173, map of Platt and White Platt, for a period of 180 days. The final map of number 1173, map of Platt and White Platt, received conditional final approval from the Planning Board on May 23rd, 2018. This approval is valid for a 180-day period that expired on November 19th, 2018. This subdivision has received two extensions of approval, with the most recent one expiring on November 14th, 2019. The applicant is requesting a third extension in order to obtain more time to receive Suffolk County Department of Health Services approval. The Planning Department has no objection to the request and recommends a period of 180 days. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2019, Extension of Conditional Final Approval for Number 1173, Map of Platt and White Platt. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Vincent J. Tramarko to extend the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as Number 1173, Map of Platt and White Platt, for a period of 180 days. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a 180-day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as Number 1173, Map of Platt and White Platt, to expire on May 12th, 2020.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. We respectfully request the extension as indicated by Matt Colado.
And the affidavit services.
Do you have the affidavit of posting?
You know, I do, but I left the file home because we're adjourning. I left the file in my office. I'm sorry?
Did you post it?
I have, gee, now I can't think of his.
Gene Nally?
Gene Nally, yep. He posts all of them. Thank you. So.
Okay, why don't we do this? Why don't we proceed and you'll get it to the Planning Board by 11:00 tomorrow morning?
Okay.
And you, as an officer of the court, you would say that it was, it's been posted in the statutory time?
Yes, my understanding it's been posted.
And I will, with your approval, go through with the hearing and we'll have the posting, just give the posting tomorrow morning to the Planning Department.
Fine.
All right, this hearing will be subject to and conditioned upon supplying the Planning Department with the affidavit.
Fine. I agree.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard on this matter? Anyone on the board have any questions? Okay. In the matter of Number 1173, Map of Platt and White Platt, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
And if I don't approve?
Oh, sorry. In the matter of Number 1173, Map of Platt and White Platt, I move that we close. I'm sorry, I move that we adopt the resolution in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion adopted. Thank you.
The next item is a preliminary subdivision for Number 1172, Plymouth Estates in Smithtown. The applicant requests preliminary approval to subdivide a 6.3, yeah, you can submit it. The applicant requests preliminary approval to subdivide a 6.3-acre parcel into five single-family lots with a cul-de-sac. The preliminary subdivision known as Number 1172, Map of Plymouth Estates, is comprised of one tax lot and is vacant. The property has approximately 230 feet of frontage on Plymouth Boulevard. The parcel is located in the R10 zoning district and surrounded by R10 zoning. To the north, south, and east are single-family dwellings. To the west are single-family dwellings and a town recharge basin. Caleb Smith State Park Preserve is approximately 157 feet west of the subject property. The yield of the property in full compliance with the subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance is six residential lots. The applicant proposes to subdivide the property into five residential lots and to preserve 3.7 acres. As the proposed density is less than the maximum yield, it is not subject to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. The topography of the site ranges from 105 feet above sea level at the southernmost point of the property and slopes downward to 35 feet above sea level at the north end of the property. The north portion of the property contains steep slopes, high groundwater, and freshwater wetlands. The entire parcel is located in the New York State DEC recreational river corridor. The applicant proposes to construct a cul-de-sac off Plymouth Boulevard, providing access to all five lots. The cul-de-sac will have a 50-foot right-of-way radius and a 40-foot pavement radius. Proposed right-of-way is positioned 40 feet south of the existing home to the northwest in order to provide the existing dwelling with a minimum required front yard setback. The applicant proposes to preserve 162,466 square feet, roughly 3.7 acres, of the north portion of the property. This portion of the property contains the steep slopes, high groundwater, and freshwater wetlands mentioned above. All of the lots conform to the minimum lot area and frontage requirements for the R10 zoning district. However, the proposed layout will require the following variances. Lot 2, reduce minimum front yard setback from 40 feet to 30 feet. Lot 4, reduce minimum front yard setback from 40 feet to 35 feet. And Lot 5, reduce minimum front yard setback from 40 feet to 30 feet. The Planning Board has the authority to grant such variances at the time of final plat approval pursuant to Section 322-30.4 of the zoning ordinance and Section 277.6 of New York State Town Law. Pursuant to Section 248-31B2 of the subdivision regulations, this subdivision is required to be clustered because the development will impact the following. One, slope succeeding 15 percent. Two, shallow depth of groundwater less than 20 feet. Three, freshwater wetlands. One of the purposes of clustering a subdivision is to preserve open space and other natural resources of the remaining undeveloped land with the town. Proposed clustered layout preserves the steep slopes, high groundwater, and freshwater wetlands on the property. Preserving this area would also provide for a continuous preserved habitat corridor from Plymouth Boulevard to Caleb Smith State Park Preserve. The Engineering Department has reviewed the preliminary subdivision and has found it acceptable and offers the following comments. One, the key map needs to be corrected to reflect the actual shape of the subdivision property lines. Two, the applicant should consider providing a retaining wall along the rear yards of Lot 1. And two, in an attempt to reduce the amount of regrading currently proposed in the rear yards. The Highway Department has reviewed the preliminary subdivision and has found it acceptable. The Traffic Safety Department has reviewed this preliminary subdivision and offers the following comments in their memo dated April 24th, 2018. One, we have concerns with the site distance south of the proposed road. Presently, there is an all-way stop at the intersection of Plymouth Boulevard and Quaker Lane. Ideally, northbound motorists should stop at this intersection, which would assist vehicles turning from the proposed cul-de-sac. However, due to the characteristics of the intersection, this department recommends designing the new intersection to line up closer to Quaker Lane. This will create an offset four-way stop location. Two, we found the grades and centerline radiuses to be substandard or very close to the tolerated allowances per the town code. Three, this department is strongly opposed to creating street names using a person's first name, as they are frequently stolen. The Department of Environment and Waterways has found the tree preservation and land clearing plan acceptable and recommends a SECRE negative declaration. They have also recommended the Planning Board impose covenants and restrictions upon the subject property so as to ensure the preservation of the 3.7-acre northern portion of the parcel, which contains environmentally sensitive lands in perpetuity. The Planning Department has reviewed the subdivision and has found them generally acceptable and offers the following comments. One, in response to the Traffic Safety Department's memo dated April 24th, 2018, the Planning Department recommends the Planning Board move ahead with their current design for the following reasons. A, since July of 2015, the Planning Department has on numerous occasions advised the applicant and the involved departments that this department will likely recommend approval of the pending preliminary layout, with the understanding that minor modifications may be recommended as conditions of preliminary approval. The layout is a result of years of meetings with the applicant to try and find a design solution that meets the zoning subdivision regulations and many other considerations. At the request of this department and the Engineering Department, the applicant has revised the details of this layout more than once. For the applicant to address the comments on the Traffic Safety Department memo dated April 24th, 2018, he would be required to start the design over from the beginning. B, the location and alignments of the proposed street result in lots that are more attractive to future residents, and in turn, this enhances property values and real property tax base. C, the design reduces the potential for stormwater impacts on the freshwater wetlands located on this property. D, the design was pursued and perfected several times on reliance on an earlier memo from the Traffic Safety Department that indicated that the proposed intersection location meets the stopping distance standards. F, it would be unreasonable to require the developer to restart the design process from the beginning after nearly two and a half years. Two, the garage on Lot 4 should be shifted to the west side of the dwelling, and the first floor elevation should be lowered to no more than 87 feet to minimize regrading. Three, the slopes in the rear yard of Lots 1 and 2 should be preserved rather than regraded. This would preserve additional trees and can be accomplished by building a retaining wall rather than regrading. Four, the regrading on Lot 3 should be minimized. Five, there are steep slopes in the rear yards of Lot 1 and 2. Depending on whether these slopes are natural or the result of regrading from the adjoining subdivision, the applicant may need to apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals when applying for building permits for the proposed dwelling. Six, the lot area for Lot 5 appears to exclude the 20-foot-wide strip of land between the right-of-way and to the lot, to the northwest. The lot area should be adjusted to include this area. Seven, the Planning Department recommends the applicant consider dedicating the land to a preserved, applicant consider dedicating the land to be preserved to a public agency or an agency that specializes in conservation. Eight, the zoning district boundaries should be added to the key map. Pursuant to Section 239N of New York State General Municipal Law, this application was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission because it was located within 500 feet of a state park, which is the Caleb Smith State Park Preserve. The Suffolk County Planning Commission considers this application to be a matter for local determination. The decision of local determination should not be construed as either an approval or disapproval. The following resolution is recommended from the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2019, Recommended SECRE Declaration for Number 1172, Map of Plymouth Estates. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the SECRE recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways and indicated that any potential adverse environmental impact associated with said project does not rise to the level of significance, which would require preparation of an environmental impact statement. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter and finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE. Second resolve, the Planning Board hereby issues a SECRE negative declaration, determination of non-significance. An EIS is not necessary in the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Tasso Sheen for Number 1172, Map of Plymouth Estates for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to involve the destruction or physical modification of any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the environmental conservation law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the areas of the parcel proposed for development do not appear to contain any high groundwater conditions, poor soil properties, or unmanageable slopes, which would impose severe environmental development constraints upon the subject parcel, subject proposal. C, although the subject parcel contained environmentally sensitive lands, slopes in excess of 15 percent, depth of groundwater less than 10 feet, and freshwater wetlands, the proposal has been designed so as to avoid any disturbance of those portions of the site, which contain high groundwater conditions and freshwater wetlands, and to minimize disturbance of the on-site slopes. D, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. E, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. F, the project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Anthony Stankinelli, licensed professional engineer and dated January 19th, 2018, provides for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and vegetation upon development of the subject parcel. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing along all limits of clearing and around any individual trees to be preserved within clearing areas. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director, and said fencing shall be maintained and placed by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2019, Subdivision Preliminary Approval for Number 1172, Map of Plymouth Estates. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Tasso Sheen to subdivide a 6.382 parcel into five lots, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the preliminary subdivision of Number 1172, Map of Plymouth Estates, subject to the following conditions. A, the key map shall be corrected to reflect the actual shape of the subdivision, property lines, and contain the zoning district boundaries. B, covenants and restrictions shall be placed on the subject parcel so as to ensure the preservation of the 3.7-acre northern portion of the parcel, which contains environmentally sensitive lands in perpetuity. This land shall remain natural and undisturbed. The applicant should consider dedicating this land to a public agency or an agency that specializes in conservation. C, the garage on Lot 4 shall be shifted to the west side of the dwelling, and the first floor elevation shall be lowered to no more than 87 feet to minimize regrading. D, the proposal on Lot 3 shall be minimized. E, the lot area for Lot 5 shall be adjusted to include the 20-foot-wide strip of land between the right-of-way and the lot to the northwest. F, the street name shall be changed to a name acceptable to the Traffic Safety Department. Second resolve, that this preliminary approval shall be valid for a six-month period to expire on, I had, May 6th, 2020. It should be changed to May 20th, 2020. And the applicant has submitted the affidavit of posting. It's in order.
Michael Resnikoff, appearing on behalf of Tasso Sheen.
Put your business address, please.
I'm with Bronster LLP, 156 West 56th Street, New York, New York. And RES, N-I-K-O-F-F.
And excuse me, do we have the affidavit service?
And we respectfully request that the preliminary approval resolution move forward.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard on this matter? Anyone on the board have any questions?
I just have one question. It says that they wanted to move the street closer to. Yeah, to Quaker. Would that be moving Lots 1 and 2 to the north compared to the south, or just?
Who, who, who wants the?
It was in the reading. Yeah, traffic wanted it.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to.
Lots 1 and 2 would have to go to the north side, and then the street would be shifted closer to the south side.
Yeah, and you'd be redesigning the whole subdivision.
Right, it'd be, exactly. Okay. Right, yeah, I saw that too. Okay. That's all I got.
Can you step up to the mic, please?
Elizabeth Deerfield, 62 Ridge Road.
Thank you.
So that, that parcel of land is about six acres, so almost half of it will be preserved. Is that correct?
Yeah, three points, it's three, 6.3, and they're gonna save 3.7.
Yeah, if you look.
Which will be to the back of that area.
Yeah, if you look to the screen.
Up on the screen there.
If you look at the screen, you can see the northern portion of the property. That is the area to be preserved.
All right, thank you, because I live on Caleb Smith.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, just a, just a quick question. What state agency have you given consideration to managing?
We, we've actually been in contact, we were in contact with the state, like, when we began the process, and Mr. Sheen, I believe, spoke with an environmental person within the last few weeks. Who did you speak to? What agency from the state? What agency from the state did you speak to? Oh, state?
Just come to the mic and, yeah, name, address.
I have no problem with his hearing aids. So basically, he had contacted somebody from the State Park Agency and about, in, you know, when we, like, started this process. So we're gonna, we're gonna, like, work through what the best way to handle, and we can work with the town as, with the best way to, like, obviously, we understand, we also want to preserve, you know, that, the land that's behind there, because I think it's beneficial to the new homeowners to have everything preserved. So we'll, we'll work, you know, with the town, we'll work something out that, that works for everyone.
I have one other question. What were you naming the street?
Did you have it, well, I don't think, we never, we never.
Yeah, on the map, it says Stephanie Corn.
It was about the street names, don't worry. We, we didn't have any issues with the street. Yeah.
Josh Stahl, 96 Plymouth Boulevard. Josh Stahl, S-T-A-H-L, 96 Plymouth. Just two questions. Are there sidewalks going to be designed in the, on the front?
Sidewalks, that's.
Yes, so the plans do indicate sidewalks, and we will, there are sidewalks on that road right now, and we do recommend to have them.
All right, and I know that one proposal, as far as, Mr. Onnick said, as far as moving the entrance to that closer to Quaker. Is there any request for more signage as far as coming from that stop sign? Just having lived there, no one stops at a stop sign regardless. And I know it's only five houses, so there won't be much traffic coming from there. But, I don't know, additional signs, slow down, you know, entrance ahead, something like that might, might be beneficial. So, that's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? In the matter of Number 1172, Map of Plymouth Estates, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed. And on the SECRE, in the matter of Number 1172, Map of Plymouth Estates, I move that we adopt a SECRE negative declaration as recommended by the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion adopted. And on the preliminary approval, in the matter of Number 1172, Map of Plymouth Estates, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a recommendation. I'm assuming that there are people in the audience for the Skunks Hollow subdivision. The, Vinnie, the applicant, did request an adjournment. I don't want to go through the whole Wallya Platt thing and have people sit there just to have something adjourned. So if you, if you want to skip to number eight and nine.
Old Dock Road as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
We'll do that next.
Yeah, so the first, the next item, we'll go right back to number seven in a minute. But number eight, Number 1180, Old Dock Road.
Okay.
We have an adjournment request from Vinnie. You, you're requesting an adjournment for Old Dock Road?
I am. Again, we, due to the untimely passing of Jimmy Erhardt, I would like the full board to pass on this. Also, we're still waiting for a meeting with the Health Department and the town people, which Matt Colado was trying to set up right now.
Would February 5th be okay? Is that too soon, or?
Nothing in January?
Well, January, we have.
The 22nd.
Well, the 22nd.
22nd, I won't be here.
Tom will be here.
Yeah, we can't do the eighth.
We can't do the eighth, though, the 22nd, but 5th.
All right, then, February is fine.
It's okay?
February 5th is seven.
And that would be on both of them.
What, what?
That would be on both of them. That would be on Old Dock and Skunks Hollow, so when I make the.
That's fine.
It's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we should do one, should we do one at a time or both?
Yes.
Do one at a time.
Yes, mm-hmm. So in the matter of Number 1180, Old Dock Road Land Division, Kings Park, I move that we recess the public hearing to the February 20, February 5th, 2020, meeting of the Planning Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's, motion is adopted. And on Number 1184, Skunks Hollow, St. James, I move that we recess the public hearing to the February 5th, 2020, meeting of the Planning Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion adopted.
So now we're gonna go back to Wallya Platt, number seven. So, okay, Number 1179, Map of Wallya Platt. The applicant requests preliminary approval to subdivide a 1.96-acre parcel into three single-family lots. The preliminary subdivision, Number 1179, Map of Wallya Platt, is comprised of one tax lot that fronts Sunny Road and St. James. The parcel is located in the R21 zoning district. The site is surrounded by R21 zoning and single-family dwellings. The subdivision proposes to construct a 40-foot-wide private right-of-way Pine Court with a turnaround radius of 50 feet. The proposed road pavement is 24 feet wide, and the proposed turnaround pavement has a radius of 40 feet. Three new homes are proposed. Two homes will front the private road, and one home will front Sunny Road. One home is currently under construction on the proposed Lot 1. The topography of the site is flat and located approximately 120 feet above sea level. The site contains no steep slopes, no high groundwater, and no wetlands or natural surface water features. All three lots conform to the minimum lot area and frontage requirements for the R21 zoning district. However, it appears some minor adjustments need to be made to the most recent revisions in order to reflect the changes made in the right-of-way dimensions. The lot area calculation for lots 2 and 3 need to be corrected, and the front yard setback on Lot 3 needs to be changed to 50 feet from the private right-of-way. Lot 2 and 3 are approximately 22,800 square feet in size. All three lots will still comply with the R21 zoning requirements after their corrections. The Engineering Department, the Engineering, Highway, and Traffic Safety Departments have found the application acceptable. The Department of Environment and Waterways has found the tree preservation and land clearing plan acceptable and recommend. and recommends a SECR negative declaration. The Department of Environment and Waterways also recommends conditions regarding the clearing of land and site preparation before construction. These conditions will be included at the time of final plat approval. The planning department has reviewed the subdivision and offers the following comments. One, the planning department has no objection to the applicant's proposal to reduce the minimum pavement width to 24 feet. The proposed private right-of-way only feeds two to three homes and is anticipated to have very little traffic. Additionally, 24 feet is wide enough for on-street parking. Two, the planning department has no objection to the applicant's proposal to reduce the cul-de-sac and curb radii to 50 feet and 40 feet respectively. It has been a standard practice of the planning board to approve such reductions as it reduces the amount of stormwater runoff and provides adequate space for emergency and maintenance vehicles to maneuver. Three, the length of the cul-de-sac is 190 feet, measured from the center line of the intersecting street to the center line of the turnaround. Section 24825G1 requires a minimum length of 200 feet. It appears the subdivision could be designed with a cul-de-sac 200 feet in length. However, the reduction to 190 feet is not substantial, and requiring an additional 10 feet appears to not serve any benefit to the subdivision or the neighborhood. Four, a 10-foot-wide planting buffer shall be placed along the south side of the private right-of-way to screen the residents to the south from the new road. This easement shall be 165 feet in length. Five, at the time of the preliminary application was submitted on October 10th, 2017, section 24831B2 required that the subdivision be clustered. Therefore, the applicant placed a 10-foot-wide conservation easement along the west, north, and east property lines of the entire subdivision. The town board has since amended section 24831B2 to the effect that this subdivision is no longer required to be clustered. Therefore, unless the applicant objects, the planning department recommends eliminating the 10-foot-wide conservation easement. This does not include the planting buffer mentioned in comment four above. Six, the regrading and drainage plan indicate that the proposed pavement in the south side yard of Lot 1 exceeds 50% of the side yard. Pursuant to section 32212I8 of the zoning ordinance, the maximum amount of pavement permitted in the side yard where there is a side entry garage is 50%. It will therefore be necessary to either reduce the amount of pavement in the side yard or request a variance at the time of final plat approval. Seven, the zoning districts shall be added to the key map. And eight, the fire district shall be changed to Nescotet. The Department of Environment and Waterways offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2019, Recommended SECR Declaration for Number 1179, Map of Wallya Platt. Whereas the planning board is considered the SECR recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways and indicated that any potential adverse environmental impact associated with said project does not rise to the level of significance which would require the preparation of an environmental impact statement. Now therefore be it, first resolve that the planning board hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter and finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to SECR. Second resolve, that the planning board hereby issues a SECR negative declaration, a determination of non-significance. An EIS is not necessary in the manner of the application of subdivision approval by Jaspreet Wallya for number 1179, map of Wallya Platt, for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the environmental conservation law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to suffer any severe environmental development constraints, no poor soil properties, no high groundwater, and no unmanageable slopes. C, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. E, the project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Kenneth H. Beckman, licensed land surveyor and dated July 8th, 2019, provides for the retention of a significant amount of trees and natural vegetation upon development of the subject parcel. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing along limits of clearing and around any individual trees to be preserved within the clearing areas. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director, and said fencing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing activities at the subject parcel. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2019, Subdivision Preliminary Approval for Number 1179, map of Wallya Platt. Whereas the planning board is considered the request of Jaspreet Wallya for preliminary approval to subdivide 1.96 acre parcel into three lots. Now therefore be it, first resolve that the planning board hereby approves the preliminary subdivision, number 1179, map of Wallya Platt, subject to the following conditions. A, the zoning district shall be added to the key map. B, the fire district shall be changed to Nescotet. C, the lot area calculation on lots two and three shall be adjusted to reflect the change in private right-of-way dimensions. D, Lot 3 shall have a 50-foot front yard setback from the private right-of-way. E, as section 24831B2 of the town code no longer requires that the subdivision be clustered, the 10-foot-wide conservation easement along the west, north, and east property lines is not required and need not appear on the final map. F, a 10-foot-wide planting buffer shall be placed along the south side of the private right-of-way to screen the residents to the south, south, from the new road. This buffer shall be 165 feet in length. Second resolve, that this preliminary approval shall be valid for a six-month period to expire on May 20th, 2020.
Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, excuse me, and members of the board, my name is Vincent Trumarko. I represent the applicant. I've submitted the affidavit and posting with a photograph to Matt Collado. We don't object to the elimination of the conservation easements, and ask the board to follow the resolution recommended by the planning department.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard on this matter? Just speaking to the mic, give your name and address, please.
Linda Janicek, 14 Pine Street, on the corner of Pine and Sunny. J.A.N.I.C.E.K. When the first house went in, every single tree was, just about every single tree was taken down. And there was significant, huge trees back there. Great horned owls lived back there. And now the rest of them will come down? There's hardly any left.
So they submitted a tree preservation plan indicating which trees they're gonna preserve and which trees they're going to take down.
I can count the trees on my, on one hand.
Yeah, so they're permitted to cut down trees in accordance with the tree ordinance, and DW does review that, and they found it acceptable.
How many trees will be left? Two?
I don't know. I'm not gonna sit here and count the trees for you.
Have any of you seen the property?
Yes.
So you saw that it was almost completely cleared? Those, those trees back there were old. Huge trees. Okay. I don't understand how that happens. I thought no builder could go in and just completely wipe out every tree and build houses. It seems the attitude of a builder is, I'll, it's okay, I'll pay the fine, which means nothing to them. No one has an answer for me?
Well, they do have to have a, they do have to have that in their, in their plan. And they were, I'm sure that they were told how many trees had to be left, and I guess that's probably what's left. I imagine.
For three lots on this size piece of property, you are gonna lose a lot of trees. There are trees marked that are gonna be spaced throughout the, throughout the subdivision itself, where obviously where the foundation is gonna be, and it can't be anywhere approaching upon the structure itself. It is gonna be a lot of trees that, that will come down, but there is a preservation plan in place to have certain trees at least marked, where it's not gonna be completely shut down, like a, closed down like a farm. So there are trees.
The plan that you see up on the screen shows what are supposed to be existing trees. And you'll see X's on the ones that have been pre-approved for removal. And then you'll see trees, whoop, sorry, with symbols like this. And those are to remain on the property. There's a tree preservation plan that they must strictly adhere to that's been approved by the environmental department. But as the board members did...
Wasn't there a tree preservation plan to begin with before the first house went up?
Yes.
I don't know about that. I mean, we're here reviewing the subdivision application, and there is a tree preservation plan that they must strictly follow. So you see all these trees over on the east end of the property? They're scheduled to remain. This is the tree clearing limits.
Before you could not see through to Hobson. Now you can see the houses back there. Those, those trees are all taken down.
Yeah, all of that being constructed with two additional homes. So as the board member said, there will be tree removal. But the board is doing the best they can to preserve whatever mature trees they can preserve. And that's what's illustrated here, that, you know, you have oak trees along here, 16-inch, an 18-inch, a 22-inch oak trees. Those are shown to remain. But there is a tree right there. That's right where septic systems propose to go. This one's to be removed. This one's to be removed. There's a home proposed right here where these six trees are.
So virtually, there will be no more trees there, really?
Well, there are trees to remain here, but, yeah, you're gonna have to...
Don't look at it.
You will need to remove trees to build homes.
I don't know. It's not going to affect us as much as it is the other neighbors, but...
May I speak?
I'm, I'm just so tired of seeing this happen all the time. Builders coming in and wiping everything out.
May I speak? John Janicek. Same address?
Yes.
Yes, I, I, I understand about the trees, and it's kind of, it's kind of a moot point right now because the original lot, you're only dealing right now with the 1.96 acres that are gonna be subdivided, correct?
That, I think it's...
That's the, that's, that's...
That's the entire lot, right?
That's, is that the entire lot? Or only the portion that's going to be subdivided to three, three buildings?
Yes.
They're gonna subdivide the 1.96 acres to, for those three buildings, yes.
To, to those three buildings?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Obviously, I guess you cannot comment on the tree removal that took place prior to the building on Lot 1. Am I correct in that? Because that's where it was practically clear-cut. And we understand that he was fined for that. I don't know if that's true, but that's what I understood. But that's a moot point. What I wanted to clarify here was, was whether or not the, each individual building lot would meet the R-21 requirements. I believe you said that upon some variance to the...
So they are complying with the minimum lot area and the setbacks. They, when they...
After, after a variance?
Uh, no.
No.
No, before.
They're...
Before the variance?
Yes.
They're not requesting any variances.
Okay, so, so in, so to maintain each of these three R-21 lots, half-acre lots?
Correct.
There'll be no further variances that you know of that will be requested to build on it?
Not at this time.
Okay, not at this time, but when they come up again, they'll just be approved. All right, thank you very much. I just wanted that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions on this matter?
Come to the mic if you'd like.
Ellen Sheridan, 54 Sunny Road, St. James.
Can you repeat your name?
If you weren't at the mic yet, I'd excuse you.
Ellen Sheridan, 54 Sunny Road, St. James.
Thank you.
I'd like to know the date of this rendering and how accurate it is.
The date of the rendering?
On the bottom, right.
There should be a date on here.
September, oh, seven.
Of this year?
Should be on the bottom, right.
July, it looks like. Well, no, received July.
Received, but when was it drawn?
We're checking that.
It's like September, it was surveyed September of 2017.
2017. That's my question. So the accuracy of the trees and the setback and how things appear are being approved based on that?
The tree preservation was...
We're checking that.
This survey is saying there was an update on the trees of March 1st, 2019.
And does it reflect on this survey? Is that, is that what the board is saying?
It should be accurate, but it's our environmental department that verifies the location of the trees versus the tree preservation plan. All I know is what I'm reading right here. And it says with the revision dates of 2017 through 2019. And the last two were updates of the trees. And my guess is that's because the environmental department probably went out there and found that it was inaccurate. So asked them to update it.
What was the last that you have? July?
Yes.
I have July 8th.
March 1st, 2019.
July, I have it July 8th, 2019.
Right.
Which one, which plan are you looking at, though?
You're looking at page, page...
The tree preservation.
Page three or four. The tree preservation land clearing plan prepared by Beck...
Right on the bottom.
The date of July 8th, 2019.
Yeah, that's the most recent date that it was conducted, the revisions.
By the Conservation Department, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should be heard? Anyone on the board have any questions?
I just have one quick question. Lot 3, is that driveway gonna come out on the new street? Or Sunny?
They're proposing it off the proposed road.
Off the proposed, okay. Yeah, very good. I couldn't tell because it had the structures to be removed, remove driveway, and I didn't tell which was the new one.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
Okay. In the matter of number 1179, map of Wallya Platt, I move that we close the public hearing.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So closed. And on the SECR declaration, in the matter of number 1179, map of Wallya Platt, I move that we adopt a SECR negative declaration as recommended by the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion adopted. And on the preliminary approval, in the matter of number 1179, map of Wallya Platt, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance...
I'm sorry.
In accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, motion adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. And...
Minutes?
Now we have the adoption minutes. Would you like to do that?
Recommend we adopt the minutes, October 2nd, October 16th of 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are adopted. And we just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You want to do the calendar tonight?
No. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.